Call to order, the workshop session for common council meeting, December 17th, 2019, at 5:08 PM. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Here.
Councilmember Heenan.
Here.
Councilmember Silveletto.
Here.
Councilmember at large, Washington.
Present. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since this is a workshop, we will skip over certification of the prior meetings, reading of the privilege of the floor regulations, and privilege of the floor. We will begin with communication from the mayor, including disapproval messages, mayor or anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Communications from the public and petitions.
We have none, sir.
None. Reports of standing committees, boards, and commissions. Councilman Williams.
That's nothing, sir.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Councilman Silveletto.
Councilmember Heenan.
Nothing, sir.
Moving on to unfinished business, we have none, so we're moving right along to prefiled resolutions, number 107.
Resolution authorizing budget line modifications for fiscal year 2019.
Any discussion, council? Seeing none, number 108.
Resolution authorizing agreement to provide drug, alcohol testing, land for testing, and consulting.
Any discussion, council? Number 109.
Resolution authorizing lease agreement with Chautauqua County Fair Association.
Any discussion, council? Um, is Richard here?
Yeah.
Sorry. I did have a quick question, Richard.
Sure.
It says, I read over the lease, um, last paragraph, or paragraph eight, says the lease is renewable for a term of one to five years upon the agreement of the parties.
Right.
Is there a term to this specific lease right now?
That's just for the one year, and the reason why they wanted to do that is this is the first year they're going to be using the fairgrounds for the, uh, the early voting, week of April.
Okay.
And so they just wanted us to clear out for that week, and then they wanted to negotiate a longer-term lease after that, once they get a feel for that. So they just wanted to-
Okay, so this is just taking us through the rest of the winter?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just for the, this season, essentially.
Okay, and then somewhere else in here, this is the last question I have, somewhere else in here, oh, it says, um, during the term of the lease, with lease payments, offsets allowed for the cost of any city improvements made, such as the installation of a water fountain. Are there planned city installations?
There's been a request for water fountain, so once we have that costed out and get that installed, essentially, we just deduct that from the rent payments.
Is it a dollar-for-dollar deduction?
It is. Correct. Okay.
Okay. Any further questions about the lease? Uh, seeing none, moving on to one, 10.
Resolution establishing standard workday and reporting resolution, New York State Comptroller, RS 2417-8.
Any discussion, council? Moving right along to number 111.
Resolution authorizing implementation and funding in the first instance, 100 percent of the federal aid and state, Mars Chiselli, program aid, cost of transportation, federal aid project, and appropriation funds, therefore.
Any discussion, council? Number 112.
Resolution for State Environmental Quality Review Act, notice of intent to serve as lead agency for the adoption of the 2019 City of Dunkirk Comprehensive Plan.
Any discussion, council? Number 113.
Resolution adapting a negative declaration under the State Environmental Quality Review Act for the adoption of the City of Dunkirk Comprehensive Plan 2019.
Any discussion, council? Um, Richard, if you can please explain, um, I understand it for the purpose of the public, what negative declaration actually means?
Right. So that's essentially saying that there are no negative impacts, environmental or otherwise, by this action. It's, it's sort of counterintuitive how it sounds, but yeah, essentially, it says that this isn't going to create, it's not going to have a negative impact.
It does not mean that we're voting it down, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Any further discussion on 113? Seeing none, moving along to 114.
Resolution for adoption of the City of Dunkirk Comprehensive Plan.
Any discussion, council? Seeing none, 115.
Resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding to provide Dunkirk City School District an evacuation and sheltering site.
Any discussion, council? Seeing none, any new business to walk in before us? Seeing none, motion to adjourn workshop. Councilmember Williams with the first.
Aye.
Councilman Silveletto with the second. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan.
Aye.
Councilmember Silveletto.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Washington.
Aye.
2019 at City Hall, located at 324 Central Avenue, Dunkirk, New York, for the purpose of presenting the October 2019 draft of the City of Dunkirk Comprehensive Plan for public comment. The City of Dunkirk Comprehensive Plan will be the basis for the land use policy of the city and will guide future growth and development. A copy of the October 2019 draft of the Comprehensive Plan and appendices will be available for review at City Hall and the city's website, www.dunkirtoday.com. All interested parties and citizens will be heard by the common council at said public hearing. With that being said, anybody who wishes to speak concerning the City of Dunkirk Comprehensive Plan, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address. Last opportunity, anybody wishing to speak about the City of Dunkirk Comprehensive Plan, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Call to order, the City of Dunkirk Common Council Meeting. Call to, call to order, is that over the microphone? Yes. Call to order, the City of Dunkirk Common Council Meeting for December 17th, 2019, at 5:30 PM. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Present.
Councilmember Heenan.
Present.
Councilmember Silveletto.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Washington.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Certification of the prior meetings.
This is to certify that an official copy of the minutes of the common council meeting of Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019, was presented to the mayor on Thursdays, December 12th, 2019. Pursuant to Section 3.03 of the Dunkirk City Charter, all items presented to the mayor are now in full force and effect, in witness whereof I have heretofore set my hand and the seal of the City of Dunkirk, New York, the 17th day of December, 2019.
Seeking a motion, dispensing with the reading of the minutes.
So move.
Councilman Williams with the first. Councilmember Bemanto with the second. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan.
Aye.
Councilmember Silveletto.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Washington.
Aye.
Reading of the privilege of the floor regulations.
The privilege of the floor shall be extended to any person appearing for themselves, in which case that individual shall be limited to three minutes, and to any person representing a group who shall be limited to five minutes. When recognized, please stand and state your name and address. The city clerk shall have the duty of maintaining such time limits, and the councilman-at-large may determine in his discretion whether individuals are speaking for themselves or representing groups. Councilman-at-large, Washington, shall maintain good order and may require any speaker to cease speaking if remarks are made in bad taste or are slanderous or nongermain to any action taken or contemplated by council. The time limits specified shall be strictly adhered to, except that a speaker may be allowed to complete a statement or thought started before such time has expired.
With that being said, privilege of the floor, the floor is now open. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Steve Reese. I reside at 433 Dub Street in the city. As both 2019 and the current governance of the city come to an end, I want to take a moment to thank all of you who chose to serve the community, as you have for the past four years. Representing a diverse populace at any level is never an easy task, and often presents difficult decisions that must be made in the best interests of the community, and community service is often thankless at best. In general, the current council, and office of the mayor, as well as so many other departments in the city governmental structure, have been successful in leading the city forward, and for that, I thank you. For some of you on this council, this will be your last meeting, and my last opportunity to thank you for all that you've done in support of your ideals and our community. I wish you the best in your future endeavors. Those of you who will remain will continue to face great challenges addressing the evolving needs of the city and its residents. In that effort, I extend to you and your newly-elected council colleagues best wishes and success. I thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Anybody else wishing to speak, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address.
Nancy Nichols, 212 Lincoln Avenue, Dunkirk. Um, I'd like to thank Mr. Woodbury for having his crew out there and getting the many trees that were taken down this week, in lieu of the continued bad winter weather we're having. And then I would like to say, Carol Olivera needs a round of applause for the beautiful job that she has continued to do at City Hall, giving it the spirit of the season. Her and her, I don't want to say "else" because some might take offense, but they've done a remarkable job in bringing brightness. Also, um, in the December 11th newspaper, the Dunkirk Museum offered holiday gifts for sale. There were quite a few items in there, and it piqued my interest, and I thought maybe the mayor would be interested, or the council, in purchasing some of the items that were there to display at City Hall. They are, one is a sketch of 1882, City of Dunkirk with the piers and everything. I have all the information here, and I will leave it up here, but it would be a nice addition if we had the funds and/or the wall space to put them around City Hall. That's it.
Thank you, Nancy. Actually, if you can hand that newspaper to the mayor, I wouldn't mind taking a look at that. Thank you for grabbing that, mayor. Thank you, Nancy. Anybody else wishing to speak, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address.
Good evening, Steve Pearl, 17 University Park, Frido, New York. I come here tonight to let you guys know I've been doing this job for close to 10 years now, and I never thought I was going to stay here this long. Um, I was able to return hundreds and hundreds of dollars to people, and I've really enjoyed that. But with all things, good things must come to the end. I decided I'm going to retire at the first of the year, and I got another opportunity where I'll be going to do that. I want to thank the citizens and staff here for the privilege and opportunity to serve, and wish the City of Dunkirk the very best, and good night, and God bless. Here's my letter.
Thank you, Steve, for your service. I know it's not always an easy job, especially dealing with people's pets, and the way the pet population and the love for pets and animals has grown over the years, as to what it was years and years ago. So I, and I know personally that your job has not always been easy, so I want to thank you for your service.
Well, I appreciate that. I put my heart and soul into it, and I really love what I did. I've met a lot of good people, some of my friends are in this room right now, you know who you are. I'm going to miss it. I hope we can fill up positions pretty soon so I can help the new guy out, or woman, and have a smooth transition.
Thank you, Steve. Thanks again.
Thanks, everybody, for helping us stay on.
Anybody else wishing to speak, please step forward to the podium, state your name and Anybody else wishing to speak, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address. Last opportunity, anybody else wishing to speak, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing none, privilege of the floor is now closed. Communications from the mayor, including disapproval messages. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one announcement to make to council. Um, there will be a press release out. Um, I learned that the, in my travels to Albany, that the city was eligible to receive some funding for flooding that occurred before I took office. Um, I directed our development department to, to pursue that, and we're going to be sending out a press release that we are going to be receiving another $125,000 for flooding that occurred back in 2015. Um, I also would like to, um, I know that today is the last official meeting of the year for the council, and I know we have three council members that will not be returning. I just want to thank all three of you for your service and professionalism. Um, you know, politics and local government is not an easy task to take on, and there will always be agreements and disagreements. Um, I appreciate the professionalism, and knowing that I've worked with people who had one common goal with me, which is to help the city progress and move forward. So thank you, on behalf of our city residents, thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
And that's all I have.
Communications from the public and petitions, there are none this evening. Moving right along to number seven, reports of standing committees, boards, and commissions. Councilman Williams.
Randy, um, there are some flooding over the weekend, 55 Ounce Street, Swan in Albany, and 463 at Lake Shore Drive East, on the sidewalk, that manhole cover, I know that we've talked about over the weekend, just wondering if you could update us on the record on what's going to be happening with any of those?
Yes. First, I'd like to thank the councilmen for calling me, uh, over the weekend, and so we could address those right away. Uh, the, uh, on Ounce Street, uh, we got that sewer cleared right away. It happened to be a private line, but our guys checked it out, and it's working well now. The, on Lake Shore Drive East, uh, when the Athenex project was going in, it was discovered that National Fuel had accidentally inserted a high-pressure gas line into a New York State DOT storm drain for about 200 feet of its length. It had been kind of working, um, since that was done, but it undermined the sidewalk, so it was, uh, it, it's good that we discovered it, because the sidewalk would have caved in. The, but meanwhile, the pipe has to be replaced. Um, the gas line will stay there. We've been negotiating with the, with the contractor and with National Fuel to get that done. The easiest way to do it would be to have National Fuel contract, the contractor directly. Um, I'm going to be meeting with the state DOT to see if they can assist with that type of thing. It's, uh, it's not a city-owned structure, but it certainly affects the city, and we will work with, at that neighborhood, and very cooperative. Uh, there's a couple of things we do, kind of a Band-Aid solution in the meanwhile, so extra salting on the sidewalk, things like that. Uh, it'll be fixed correctly, and it was a latent condition that nobody knew about until that was done, and we'll get, we'll get it fixed. Um, and then the other one you talked about is over on Swan. Uh, that area, um, and at the end of Pennsylvania, and Swan, and all that area over there, there's, needs a little bit of piping and some ditch cleaning, and that area can be drained. It used to drain well, and there's been some work by other utilities in that area that have disrupted a little bit, but I think with the city working over there, we could fix it. We have a very similar project, uh, on Monroe Street, that's affected the Grand Avenue people. So I know we wanted to pave Grand Avenue, but I'm kind of glad that we didn't get it done this year, because you wanted to fix your drainage first. And that was a latent condition we didn't know about until these recent flooding situations. So that we, we addressed them best we could with, with the weather conditions we have. Um, I've asked the crews to make a plan, um, so that they can more permanently address them when the weather allows.
Okay, thank you. Um, I got a call from a First Ward resident that was coming to City Hall for, I don't even know what his reason was for coming, he didn't say, but that doesn't matter. But, uh, he usually parks in a handicap spot behind the Sterns Building, and when he came, he noticed that, that handicap spot is no longer there, and there's all director parking over there. So were we gonna add more handicap parking over that way, or what, what's happening with, uh, the handicap parking for behind, behind the street here?
I can talk about it just briefly, then I'll have the city attorney address that.
Okay.
Uh, we had some communication, uh, through the people who enforce the American with Disabilities Act, which is actually the United States Department of Justice, and we felt that the handicaps, or the disability, they prefer to be called the disability parking spaces, um, along the Sterns Building could be shared with that parking lot. It looks, it appears that you can't do it that way, and the inclination of that, of those spaces was too steep to meet the code, so they removed. The, uh, no new spaces were created in total, but the disability parking was moved over to where the senior employee spot was. Um, the city clerk spot is now a no more, no parking zone, so that, that the other disability spot was a director of development. Those two spots were moved over to the Sterns Building, and then the disability parking that now meets, now is compliant with the ADA requirement is now over, and on that side, it's level. Uh, we still have to put the striping in there, and the logos, and things like that, but it, it's getting some compliments. We also put in electric door openers, uh, at, at the entrance between the Stern Building and the City Hall on both sides. Uh, so we have a nice ADA-compliant spacing, and we have a nice accessible route to all of City Hall, including the Sterns Building, which will be City Hall Annex, and the, and all of the facilities within City Hall.
So it's still there, it's just moved, moved closer?
Yeah, I don't know if Rich wants to say anything else more about-
I'll let him know.
It's moved into the lot. It's basically on this side of the lot now.
It's in the lot?
Yeah.
Not, not on that incline, then? Okay.
Right, because the issue was, the incline in number two is because the, the parking lot has about over 50 spaces, per the ADA regs, you're supposed to have at least three handicap spots. So we just moved them into those spaces there, and now we're compliant.
Okay. Um, then I also want to report that last Thursday, we met with the New York Foundation for Fair Contracting. Uh, if everybody remembers, back in February of 2018, we had passed a responsible bidder resolution. Um, as we found out, we haven't been handing out the questionnaire when we do the RFPs, so I believe after that meeting, we're going to be handing out the questionnaire when we put an RFP out, so that we can keep track and make sure that, uh, all the, all the bidders are on the up and up, and, uh, haven't been on the, the, uh, debarred list for the state. So, uh, thank you for everybody that attended, and, um, I'm hoping that we move forward with that, so that it's not just a resolution on paper, but we're actually following through with it. Um, I've heard a few different things, um, Mayor Richard, whichever one would answer it. Um, for inauguration day, I hear that we are not putting up appointments in this one?
That hasn't been decided yet, but there was a question as to whether it was legally required, per the charter and the code. And upon my review, it's not, there's nothing in the code that speaks to it, but I do know that traditionally, it's been done as part of Dunkirk tradition, so that decision hasn't been made yet. But the question that I received was whether it was legal or not, and I investigated that, reviewing the code, and also reviewed the code with the help of NICOM, and because the code is silent to it, it's not a legal necessity, but it's been more of a traditional thing.
Right, and for transparency, I wish that we would do it, and also for transparency, there's been raises in the past that we said were covered by a budget, so if we don't have anything on inauguration day, then I'm assuming that anybody that's been appointed goes back to what the previous resolution was that appointed them for their rate of pay. If we're not going to keep doing this, we need to, we need to be transparent, we need to put this stuff out there. It's probably going to cause more of a hassle if we don't put the resolutions in than, than if we do put the resolutions in. So I, I think transparency, we should be putting all the appointees up. Uh, my term ends December 31st, Marty's term ends December 31st, the mayor's term ends December 31st, and us three are coming back for a new term January 1st, so I believe that we need to have those, all those resolutions in there on inauguration day.
Yeah, I think you're mixing up two issues, and I understand fully what you're saying in terms of the argument about transparency, but in the case of budgetary impact versus just the inauguration, that's two separate issues. And just so you're aware, for 2020, there were no raises. That wasn't even discussed at budget, because there weren't any in the budget, so in terms of the appointees, everybody's at where they were for 2019. That hasn't changed.
Right, but in the past, we've, we've been told that we've had raises in the budget, but yet we had no resolution confirming that, and-
There were resolutions.
The charter clearly states that, that the city, the city council actually sets the, they approve the mayor's appointees, and we set positions and set, set salaries. So I believe that those need to come before us, just like Glenn's position never came before us, that I remember.
Glenn's no longer an appointee. That position, if you remember, we changed the charter via local law change, I think back in 17- You voted for it, councilman.
I don't remember us doing that.
We changed that position to a civil service supervisor-level position, because that's essentially what it's always been.
That's always been, yeah. It's always been a civil service.
And it's a supervisor-level position, so it's no longer an appointed director position.
Then we gotta, then we gotta straighten up the charter, then, that's on the, on the slide that we get.
We changed, we changed the charter. That's already been changed.
I was just looking at it this past week, and it didn't have that in there.
The changes haven't all been updated online, that is true. We do need to do that.
All right, can I get another copy of that, then, the updated charter, then, please?
Sure can.
All right, and then, uh, as the mayor said, uh, Councilman Washington, Councilman Heenan, and Councilman Silveletto, it's been, it's been fun working with you guys. I wish you well in the future, and, uh, hope you stay part of the city and keep doing things with the city, and stay active. And for everybody out there, have a happy and safe holiday season.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. Councilman Bemanto?
First of all, I'd like to wish everybody a happy, safe holidays, have a great New Year, like Councilman Williams is saying, Mayor Rosa is saying, to three guys that are leaving. It's a pleasure working with you. We always agree on everything, but your best interest was winning the city. I believe that, and I wish you guys luck.
All set? Councilman Bemanto, all set?
All done.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilman Heenan?
I'd just like to thank everybody in the, the community. It was, uh, out of my many years at, uh, as an elected official, this was probably the most rewarding two years, and, uh, I wanted to thank everybody. Marty says it doesn't always go everybody's way the way it wants to be, and there's always got to, there's some conflict, and that's the way that politics works. And with that being said, Merry Christmas, everybody, and everybody at City Hall, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Heenan. Councilman Silveletto?
Um, I also want to say thank you to everyone that I worked with, um, especially, um, the mayor, and everyone else on the council, thank you. Yes, Sean specifically. And, um, uh, I was the Public Safety Committee Chairman, so, um, I'd like to really thank the two chiefs, Chief Ortalano and Chief Edwards, for all of your help and your support and your knowledge, um, because the, the things that you guys, you two, and your departments do for the city is, is incredible. Um, I was also on the Comprehensive Plan Committee, so I'd like to thank Rebecca for all of her work, for not only the Comprehensive Plan, but for all the work she did on the pier, and all the work that she did on, um, the 17 different grants that are going on right now, and the amazing amount of, of, of money that you've been juggling with and working with, and, and your, your department, they've been, they've been fantastic. Um, you know, I was also on the Dog Park Committee, um, we got that through, so that was, that was a great, um, great thing for the city, drive by the Dog Park, even in the winter with a foot of snow, there's still labs out there having fun. So that's, that's great. Thank you for, to Randy, um, for all the things that you've done, the, the weird calls and the texts that I've, at 10 o'clock in the morning and 10 o'clock at night, um, that you've answered, and, uh, my concerns, and getting things like Nevins paved, and, um, our plans for, for getting some drainage into, into GSA, and, uh, you know, there's a lot, a lot of stuff that, that we've discussed that I'm sure that will, you'll still be doing as, as I leave. Um, I'm also proud of a couple of different projects, like the splash pad, uh, that I helped to secure the funds from the Rotary, um, to, to match, um, and, um, still my defense of, of opening an opioid clinic here in Dunkirk, which is still, still sorely needed. Um, if one thing that I'm, like to talk to the mayor about, though, um, a couple of years ago, I brought up this topic of parking meters, and I still haven't heard anything about that. I know you're working on it. We're getting money from where? Who we're waiting for?
We are working with the Financial Restructure Board on these parking meters.
All right, thank you. Yeah, that was my first topic ever. So, um, in the spirit of Christmas, thank you to all department heads, thank you to all employee, employees of the city, um, and to my fellow councilmen and elected officials. Thank you. Have a great Christmas.
Thank you, Councilman Silveletto. Um, I just have two things underneath-
I just have two things underneath this. As far as, Don, your questions about the inauguration goes, I have spoken with the mayor and Richard about concerns from both sides of that table and sort of being the middleman. And I ask that conclusion be made prior to the inauguration meeting so it doesn't become divisive during the inauguration meeting, and that conclusion come in writing so that all parties can see it, and there will be one answer instead of everybody having different answers and talking to different people. So I have had that conversation with the mayor and the city attorney, hoping that that can be concluded well before the inauguration meeting.
Thank you.
And Mike stole one of my lines, but I wanted to thank Rebecca. She gave us a year-end report at the Economic Development Committee meeting today. A few years ago, when she started here, we asked her to -- she would give a verbal report, but there was not really a chart or anything that went along with it. And our heads were spinning because of all the grant applications we had going on, and we didn't have anything to refer back to. So I remember at that point in time, we asked her to do some type of Excel spreadsheet for the meeting so we can see exactly what's going on and keep track of it. And she came up with this about three years ago, and every single meeting, she hands these out at the Economic Development Committee meetings, and you could see exactly all the grants, what year they started, how much money was spent out of them, how much money is remaining in them. And she reports on every single one of these at every single meeting. And right now, as Mike said, since she took office, I guess, took over the department in 2016, there are currently 17 grants that this administration has landed for the city of Dunkirk for different types of events and things throughout the city. And I say that because the city just didn't focus on one specific part of the city. We didn't focus just on recreation. She didn't focus just on infrastructure. She didn't focus just on parks or just, you know, just the waterfront or anything like that. It was all-encompassing. So if you take a look at this list of 17 grants that are still in operation, this doesn't even include CDBG grants. The CDBG grants are in addition to this. Those 17 grants add up to $9.3 million of things that have happened in the city of Dunkirk that came through the grants that otherwise would've had to been paid for by city of Dunkirk taxpayer dollars that we got done by state dollars or federal dollars. Granted, yes, I know, it's all our money somehow, some way down the pipeline, but you didn't get hit with it in your city tax bill, is my point. If you include the CDBG dollars, it adds up to $12.2 million worth of things that we're having done within the city of Dunkirk. And that's just during Rebecca's time in office here. And on top of that, she just put out a list today of 12 new ones that are in the pipeline as well that they're applying for, that we did not receive. These 17s are ones that we're receiving and already spending. There's 12 more that are being applied for. So that's a total of 29 grants within the last three and a half years, maybe, that the city of Dunkirk has been involved with. And I don't even know how many other numerous ones we've got refused for along those lines, too. So you can easily count over 30 grants that we have applied for. So I just wanted to thank her. I know I've mentioned that a few times over the years, but if anybody ever comes to an Economic Development Committee meeting, which I've mentioned numerous times, if anybody's interested in it, these do get passed out there, and you could see exactly all the different things that are going on in the city of Dunkirk and where the monies are going. And one of the things I'm most proud of with that department is that they do look at all of the city of Dunkirk and don't just focus on one aspect of it and build up that one aspect. They're trying to sprinkle the money around all over the place to take care of everything. So I wanted to mention that today because I don't believe Rebecca and her department get enough credit for what they do with the monies that are coming into the city of Dunkirk. So I just wanted to thank you, Rebecca, and your crew as well. Moving on, unfinished business. We don't have any. Number nine, prefiled resolutions, 107.
Resolution authorizing budget line modifications for fiscal year 2019.
Any discussion, council? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemato?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Sivaleto?
Aye.
Number 108?
Resolution authorizing agreement to provide drug-alcohol testing, Langford testing, and consulting.
Any discussion, council? Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemato?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Sivaleto?
Aye.
Councilmember Alajwa Wash?
Aye.
Resolution authorizing lease agreement with Chautauqua County Fair Association. Any discussion, council? Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemato?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Sivaleto?
Aye.
Councilmember Alajwa Wash?
Aye.
Resolution authorizing standard -- establishing standard workday and reporting resolutions New York State Comptroller RS 2417-A.
Any discussion, council? Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemato?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Sivaleto?
Aye.
Councilmember Alajwa Wash?
Aye.
Resolution authorizing implementation and funding in the first instance, 100% of the federal aid and state Marchiselli program aid caused for transportation, federal aid project, and appropriating funds therefore.
Any discussion, council? Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemato?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Sivaleto?
Aye.
Councilmember Alajwa Wash?
Aye.
Resolution for State Environmental Quality Review Act, notice of intent to serve as lead agency for the adoption of the 2019 City of Dunkirk Comprehensive Plan.
Any discussion, council? Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemato?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Sivaleto?
Aye.
Councilmember Alajwa Wash?
Aye.
Resolution adopting a negative declaration under the State Environmental Quality Review Act for the adoption of the City of Dunkirk Comprehensive Plan 2019.
Richard, I'm gonna ask you the same question I did in workshop. Can you please explain, for the sake of the public that may be watching on TV or reading this in newspaper, what exactly does negative declaration mean?
And I'll defer to Rebecca for any more detail, but essentially, the language comes out of the Seeker Act, which is essentially asking if there's any negative environmental impact on any of these things.
The music starts.
Any of these things that go through that act. And in this case, what the negative declaration is saying, it's kind of sort of a reverse saying. It's saying that there is nothing negative that comes with the comprehensive plan that will negatively impact the environment.
A lot of negatives.
Rebecca, he was gonna defer to you. Did you want to jump in on that, or no?
Nope, that's exactly right. A negative declaration means that there's no negative environmental impacts with the comprehensive.
Okay. And for the public's sake, that does not mean we're voting it down or we have a negative view upon it. So I just wanted to clarify that. Any further discussion, council?
Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemato?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Sivaleto?
Aye.
Councilmember Alajwa Wash?
Aye.
Resolution for adoption of the City of Dunkirk Comprehensive Plan.
Any discussion, council? Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemato?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Sivaleto?
Aye.
Councilmember Alajwa Wash?
Aye.
115, resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding to provide Dunkirk City School District an evacuation and sheltering site.
Any discussion, council? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemato?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Sivaleto?
Aye.
Councilmember Alajwa Wash?
Aye.
Any new walk-ins before us?
Before I ask for adjournment, I just wanted to say my piece as I'm leaving office. This is the last council meeting as well. I've spent 13 years in an elected position for the city of Dunkirk. Nine as head of the Assessment Department, four here as your councilman-at-large. I chose not to run for reelection this year. I have some other irons in the fire, which I know surprises a lot of people. But what I wanted to say is although you read the newspapers and you watch TV and you hear rumors along the streets about all this stuff that's going on in City Hall and between this person and that person, the mayor is absolutely correct in what he said earlier, is that we're all here for one reason. You may see that we don't get along. You may read that we don't get along, but we're only here for one reason, and that's for what's best for the city of Dunkirk. There are some very divisive times while holding elected office in the city of Dunkirk, especially around election time. Things can get very nasty. But at the end of the day, we're only here for one reason, and I truly believe that even though you may not agree with everything your counterparts say, at the end of the day, you have to respect that person's point of view, and you have to respect the vote that happened during the council meeting as well. I know that's sometimes a very hard pill to swallow, but that's why the process exists. In my time in office, I have always tried to be very professional, very level-headed, and, most importantly, very honest. That's something that I have been instilled in me since childhood, so I hope that I came across that way in my four years here on the bench. But one of the things I am most proud of is, over my 13 years in office, I have been asked to run for election by both sides on numerous occasions. And while some people that are in the political arena, deep and heavy, may view that as a negative, I view that as a positive. Because if I'm being asked to run for elected office by both sides of the aisle, that means I'm playing a pretty fair game, and I'm playing a pretty honest game up here. So that's something that I'm probably most proud of, is being able to be level-headed and be professional with both sides of the aisle. But again, thank you for the 13 years, and hopefully I'll stay active. And I also wanted to say to some of the department heads here, I can honestly say, in my 13 years in office, some of you sitting here today are the best department heads I've ever seen in City Hall. I really, truly, honestly mean that.